So it's now 7:19. I'm Luke Freudenberg, Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. To my immediate right is my Vice Chair Sarah Silk. Remotely tonight, our Secretary Tim Cronin, member Suzanne Ryan, member Audrey Klein. So we will call this meeting to order. Again, this is a virtual meeting and in-person session at the Town Hall, 24 South Main Street, Wolfboro. We encourage social distancing. All zoning board members are available for live viewing on Wolfboro TV Channel 25 or the WCT YouTube channel. As required by RSA 676, zoning board hereby notice you the following projects. Tim, can you hear me? Tim Cronin?
Tim Cronin.
Okay, I'm gonna read. First public hearing, tax map number 203-62-63, case number 17-SE-20. Applicant, New Hampshire Boat Museum. This is a public hearing for a special exception under Article 17, Section 175-107-E of the Wolfboro zoning ordinance to allow for a special exception for the Boat Museum with a five-year expiration. This property is located at 57-59 Bay Street.
Luke, I think I got an audio.
Yes, Suzanne.
Just a point of order. Are you supposed to do a roll call? And then we're supposed to say why we are either present or not present?
That's excellent. We'll do that real quickly. We'll do a roll call. Sarah Silk?
Oh, I'm here in person.
Here in person. Audrey Klein?
Present. And myself.
Suzanne Ryan?
Ask him if anybody's...
Present at home due to the virus.
Thank you Suzanne. Tim Cronin?
I'm here and there's no one else in the room.
Okay. And Dave said up to call me earlier that he has enough power so he's not going to be attending the meeting tonight, so. So thank you for that Suzanne. Public hearing. The call is open. Presenter tonight. I'm gonna bring the laptop over to the chance they can see the... On Luke, the camera at your desk is now working.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time this evening. I'm Bob Sternayle. I'm a trustee of the Boat Museum.
Travis, could you ask him to get closer to the mic?
Closer? I think I've given you pretty much the whole story and the application materials. If you'd like, I can run through that quickly. This is a recurrence of an application that first occurred three years ago. The zoning board granted a special exception at that time. The special exception had a two-year life. It was three years ago. By my math, I believe it expired about a year ago. So we are back here for a repeat performance of the site plan application. We're essentially asking for the same thing, only this time we'd like to give it a five-year life. The Boat Museum proposes to build a new museum at our site based on... You have the site plan and the application materials? I don't know if I should read the whole application to you, but I think perhaps a synopsis is in order. Is that appropriate, Mr. Chair? The first question in your application materials asks about site suitability. The site has been reviewed by the planning board and received the site plan approval. I think that in itself is pretty good evidence that we have an adequate site. You have the plan materials. We have decent access to Bay Street. And we have all the environmental requirements in order to receive a state alteration and terrain permit. Neighborhood impacts. Bay Street is already a very busy street. The kind of traffic that we expect to generate isn't gonna make much of a difference on Bay Street. I think you probably all go through Bay Street on a summer day, which is when our traffic would be. And I think the high estimate of 100 trips a day in the museum, I emphasize that's a very optimistic traffic level, would not have much impact on Bay Street. Bay Street provides good access to both North Main Street through Mill Street and to... We're not gonna make a lot of noise and vibration. Traffic would be a primary noise source. Once the construction is done, we're not gonna generate any dust or glare or fumes, odors, anything like that, that sort of activity. There is some of that going on in Boat Museum programs, but that's over on Center Street at our existing site. We don't have any expectation of doing any of that work on Bay Street. Hours of operation will be consistent with... Well, the operation of the museum, which is what we're asking for approval tonight, primarily we will see visitor traffic during the day and probably in the evenings, we would expect to see some educational programs, lectures, things like that, and some fundraising activities. One of the principal activities of the museum is raising funds. We don't run on public money. We run on charity and whatever income from our programs. The use to our proposal is compared to some of the specifically allowed uses in this district, which include things like restaurants and retail shops. I think we're gonna be a relatively benign neighbor. Public services and facilities aren't gonna be much of an issue. We have public sewer and water available, stormwater drainage. If you look at the site plan, you will see abundant evidence of planning to deal with stormwater runoff, in fact, it occupies a good deal of the site. Facilities to deal with stormwater runoff. Fire protection, we don't know yet whether sprinklers are required. If they are, well, of course, we'll have them. The site access to the parking lot will be adequate for large vehicles like fire engines and emergency vehicles. Parks were not gonna cause any use in park. In fact, I don't know if anyone looked closely at the site. For the first time recently, I took a walk down near the waterfront of the site. It looks like a park. And we intend to keep much of that waterfront area relatively free of development, so it will do walk-throughs and such down there, so it almost adds a park. We don't burden schools in any way. Adicacy of the site, parking scheme has been approved by the planning board. In fact, I think it caused a change in the site plan since the first time that the zoning board saw this application. The parking was increased a bit, which led to slight changes in the orientation of the building and the location reserved for the Mini-Mount Washington Boat. It appears on the site plan. Plenty of open space left after we get done building, traffic circulation. We're on a busy road already. We have a decent entrance to the road. We don't plan any fences or screening. Site provides pretty good separation from our neighbors, except one close, one house close to us on one side has a row of nice tall airgreens, which are pretty good screening materials on their lot, right at the lot. Signs will conform to town ordinance. We don't operate any commercial vehicles. We occasionally move boats around, our boat trailers pulled by private vehicles. We will respect the dark sky requirements of lighting certainly. Neighborhood integrity. The zoning ordinance has some interesting provisions, which I think point directly to the use of the site as a museum. The ordinance states that the purpose of the district is to, quote, "provide for a transition from existing village court to a district providing professional institutional cultural limited retail activity for mixed commercial and residential use." Well, I think we're a cultural institution, so we fit that pretty well. Museum is a use specifically anticipated by the ordinance, subject to this review by the zoning board. We need to get your special exception in order to operate. But I think we've arranged this in such a way that it's not going to cause anybody any problems really. It is a use that's promoted in the master plan. Impact on property values, well, I'm not an assessor, I don't know that I could give you an authoritative opinion, but I think when you look at the permitted uses in this district and the other uses that might be allowed by special exception, the museum is actually a nice complement to the existing uses in the zone and a good neighbor for the other people in the zone. The master plan language that I'd like to mention here says, Section CF6, specifically supports the museum's growth plan. It says, quote, "Improve the town's position as a center for museums in order to improve the quality of life of its citizens and increase attractiveness to tourists," end quote. Section CF16 mentions that, quote, "Support a joint effort by the existing local museums," and it lists in parentheses, among others, the Boat Museum, "to undertake growth plans that would promote increased opportunities and visitation for Wolfboro citizens and visitors to existing local museums," end quote. Perhaps I should stop there and see if there are any questions on that. I want to talk about the five-year life request. Perhaps I should wait a second and see if there are any questions on what I've done so far.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Luke?
Yeah, let me open the public hearing Suzanne. Suzanne, go ahead.
Luke, are you taking questions from the board?
Go ahead Suzanne.
Thank you. The question would be to Travis. Is this site plan gonna go back to the planning board?
Travis says no. It's good to go.
Okay, in that case, I'd like to know more specific information as to the hours of operation, rather than just saying typical of a museum. This museum is a little different in its location on the water, so could you articulate what the hours will be?
Well, I think I'd rather not give specific hours. We're asking for permission to establish the use as a museum. Museums do a variety of things, and they may be done at a variety of times. The typical operation is probably gonna be in the neighborhood of nine to five with evening hours for special activities. But I think it would be inappropriate to constrain the museum to never operate outside of those times.
I have a question in reference to hours. Take the Wolf Trap for example. Travis, does a business like that have a restriction on their hours of operation?
I don't believe so. One would have to be placed on it for that to occur.
So if other businesses on that street have no restrictions, why would we put the restrictions on this particular?
Well, that's a board consideration.
They're grandfathered.
I can't hear Tim Cronin.
I think the issue is that there's a town noise ordinance, and so whether they're open or not is kind of not relevant. What's relevant is are they having an impact? I think that impact is the greatest, is enforced through the town noise ordinance, as it is with the Wolf Trap and any other activity that is downtown.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think the museum has any problem complying with the town's noise ordinance.
I was concerned about Sundays.
Sundays will be a normal operating day for the museum, especially during the summer season.
What is your concern about Sundays?
Well, there is a church on that road. I think it should be respectful of Sunday hours.
In what respect?
It's a religious church. Typically, you don't go full bore with your business on a Sunday morning.
Does that mean on Center Street where there are churches and on Route 28 where there are churches, we're gonna go back and restrict them from having any new businesses around there or selling businesses that are in business to shut down during that period of time?
As what I said before, those places are grandfathered. We're dealing with a new application.
What is the impact greater with this or any other business than with the church? Speaking of, say, the Bay Street Church, they can have outside services on a Sunday.
Well, what we have proposed, look, I'm not gonna nitpick a Sunday morning, but let's go back to trips generated and let's look at it as a whole. Bay Street is going to have to be reconstructed in part and parcel because of the Boat Museum to the tune of $350,000 as it stands in today's money. They are saying that the trips are pretty minimal, but they have projected 20 additional trips to Bay Street per day, and they have a goal of hopefully reaching 100 trips per And they're talking 10 hours per day of operation as an example of an estimate. So I think there is a concern. I know there's a concern amongst neighbors. This is a new board here this year, and for those that heard the last presentation of the application, the neighbors were concerned about trips and travel on Bay Street. And partly because of that, we're gonna have to widen Bay Street, put in sidewalks, survey and resurface and redo the drainage. So I think that all encompassing the trips and the hours, it's a good discussion to have with this board.
So can you remind me, because I'm not all that up to date, but my understanding very generally is that the master plan calls for development of Bay Street and the reworking and reengineering and rebuilding of Bay Street, including a sidewalk, because the master plan anticipates creating that as a, you know, a commercial-like environment rather than a residential-like environment. Am I not correct with that?
You're pretty much correct in that it was all generated by the proposal of the Boat Museum when they bought the land. And so when the Boat Museum came to light that they bought the land and the master plan was being rewritten, it wrote that anticipation into it.
Okay, and I wasn't proud of the master plan, but my feeling is that the anticipation is that that's being prepared for more than one business on that street.
I disagree.
Do we have any other questions? The public hearing is over. Any members of the public? Members of the public? More against it?
What did you say?
I'm asking members of the public, Audrey, if there are any members of the public that would speak either for or against it or have any questions. Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Board members?
Yes, I have another concern or question. More or less a question. They state that the... Which is correct, the museum has no commercial vehicles unto themselves, but the commercial vehicles that will be traveling that road are transportation buses, the scenic buses and the tourist buses. So that was another concern that the abudders and neighbors had, and that is in part and parcel why they're gonna have to widen this road to accommodate the Greyhound-type buses. I just am bringing this to the attention of the board for their consideration. I'm not gonna argue the issue all night, but I think you should be made aware.
Thank you Suzanne. Tim, Audrey, any other questions?
I want to talk about the request for the extending of the time period for the special exception. I don't know that we have the authority to do that, and I'd like to get an opinion from the town attorney as to whether we can do that before we do it, if that's what we're inclined to do. I do feel like special exception may change over time. I understand that that causes difficulty with the investment and the creation of a long-term plan. I'm not sure how I feel about that, but before I go down that road, I want to know whether I really need to think deeply about it or not, and whether we have the authority to extend that period.
Audrey, this is Travis. I agree, I do have a question about extending beyond the two years. To me, the burden needs to be on the applicant to demonstrate it beyond what's presented in the application materials. There's not really a clear justification to go from two years to five years. Typically, the two years is required in case the town were to make any changes in the zoning regulations or otherwise, which really would have more of an effect on perhaps hours of operation or vehicle trips or something specific. In this case, the special exception is really for the use, and the use shouldn't change. Perhaps the feeling is that it might take more than two years to get the use established, and therefore they want some more time. That is something I think the board could consider. But, you know, to look at it the other way, the master plan was just adopted, so it seems somewhat unlikely there would be any major change that would affect a special exception within the next five years. I do think you have the ability to go beyond five years, but I think you would need to create a finding as to how you justify this going beyond two. Does that help?
Does that help?
Luke?
Again, I don't know that the RSA gives us authority to extend it, except for by incrementally every two years by a request such as this.
Correct, and my recommendation would be that the board hold to that. It puts the owners back on the applicant.
The amount of trucks. It says 100 per day. Hold on Suzanne. It says 100 trips per day. Is that 100 cars coming in? Is that 50 coming in and 50 going out? Could you please define 100 trips per day?
Typically, trips are round trips, so that would be 50 in, 50 out. But I would defer to their traffic engineer on that.
50 trips over a 10-hour day does not seem excessive.
Luke, can we talk about this extension?
Yes, actually. Suzanne, wait one second. Sarah has a question here too, so.
She's been waiting. Just hold on one second.
Sarah?
Yes, thank you Luke. I had a concern about the five years. Generally, the special exception is good for two years, and...
We can't hear her.
Okay. I have a concern about the five years. You are given a special exception for two years, and you are allowed to come in before that expires if you feel like you do need additional time. In this instance, we had to virtually start over because somehow it fell through the cracks, it lapsed, it went away, we had to start from ground zero. But if they go two years and they feel that they don't have the funds and they need additional time, they can come and ask for it. There is an avenue to extend that for another two years or more. An extension can be more than two years. The concern I had just a little bit in reading this was they said that one of the reasons they were concerned about was ordinances, and Travis seems to have sort of relieved my mind about changes in ordinances as the master plan was just adopted and he doesn't feel that that would happen in five years. I was a little concerned about the worried about the neighbors. Well, the process gives both the applicant and the abudders equal standing at all times, and I was just a little put off by the thought that they were trying to circumvent 50% of the process. I would be in favor of two years and an opportunity to come back and get an extension. Very likely, they could get maybe a three-year extension, but I really hate to go from the two, and I have concerns about whether we can even do that, as I think Audrey said in the beginning. Thank you.
Luke?
Suzanne.
Luke, Suzanne here?
Yeah, go ahead Suzanne.
Yeah, regarding the extension, Sarah brought up the point. I'm in agreement with what seems to be not going the five-year route, but Sarah brought up the point about the neighbors. These people have lived in limbo on this project in anticipation of it going forward. Some have put their house up for sale. Some have just come to live with it. However, the town of Wolfboro voted on this ordinance, and they put in the two years in accordance with state law. We have been given the authority to extend it. We have had occasion where people have come in to extend, and we have granted, given the circumstances of their background. In this case, I think that they put the huss before the cot. They should get the approval. They should do their due diligence, and should they need an extension, then come in and make the similar case that they've made currently. But I am not in favor of going beyond the two years that we are authorized to give. I think it sets a precedent that we will come to regret when other developers come in for such.
Okay, thank you Suzanne. Do you want to make that a motion? Do you want to make a motion that we...
I would like to get that off... I'd like to get that off the table and make a motion that we do not extend the two years to five.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been seconded. Is there any discussion from the board?
Yeah, I don't understand. Are we voting to extend it for two years or are we just not extend it for five years?
Not to extend it from the two to five. It will be two years if approved.
Would it make sense to do that upon approval rather than prior?
I'd like to get this off... I'd like to get it off the table. I'd like to get this off, I'd like to get it off the table. I think it's a, uh, important issue.
Okay, okay.
I, I have a question for Travis. Changing that from five to two, does this application have to be resubmitted?
No, they're applying for two. They, they apply with their app, their application grants them two if we approve it.
He was asking.
He was asking.
Who was asking?
Tim Cronin. What was the question?
Tim, can you ask that question again?
I'm looking in here. If, if they're asking for five and we're, and we're saying, no, you can only do two, can we revise that in a vote? Or do they have to reapply for it?
What, what the statute says under six seventy-four, thirty-three, Roman numeral four, B. Special exceptions authorized under this code that shall be valid if exercised within two years from the date of final approval, or as further extended by local ordinance or by the zoning board of adjustment for good cause, provided that no such special exception shall expire within six months after the resolution of a planning board application filed in reliance upon the special exception.
Right.
So, if you want to leave it at two, they have the ability to request an extension at a later date? Or to make a finding for good cause to go beyond the two years.
Are you, are, see, I can read that to, to mean that they can, it can be extended by the board if they come back and ask again.
Correct, that's how, that's how we have done it. Our policy has been, if we approve, it's written in for two years after site plan, the six months for site plan, and then we have had occasion for people to come in and ask for an extension, and I can only think of one case, because they didn't meet, uh, water quality purposes, we would deny them. Other than that, they, they have met the requirement for extension, and sometimes it's a three year, sometimes it's a two year, given their circumstances.
Correct.
I have another question about the application.
I tried to read the statute without inferring any legal opinion in that. So I agree that the extension is after the initial two years or before the expiration of the first two years, where good cause can be demonstrated. Not that you could tonight go for five years. For example.
Thank you for that clarity.
Can, I have a question on the, um, on the memo page, um, under the subject line. It says something about a variance filing date of eleven sixteen twenty twenty. What is that?
We get a motion on the floor and seconded?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. No, the motion is seconded. This is a motion to not extend the special use exception. Past two years.
Correct.
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 Roll call vote.
I'm gonna do a roll call vote.
Audrey?
Audrey?
Uh, yes.
Tim Cronin?
Tim Cronin?
Yes.
Suzanne Ryan?
Suzanne Ryan?
Yes.
Sarah Silk?
Sarah Silk?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, okay.
Can we, can we make it clear in the minutes that it, that reflects that is for this period of time? I don't want to dissuade them from being able to come back in at the end of two years.
The question, the question is, what is the application requirement for the extension? It might be the same. Would likely be the same. So the board would be able to have public input to help them determine good cause. No, we're not asking for it. We're saying the process allows for you to apply to extend two years.
So the application for extension is exactly the same as applying for special?
Well...
I think the proof is different.
To establish the use within two years, you would need to reapply for the use.
That's right. There would be no opportunity to change the use after two years.
You wouldn't need to, because the use is in effect.
If it is established and you change the ordinance, it will have no effect.
Well, having a hard time hearing the conversation.
Okay.
He needs the microphone.
This one? This one? Oh, we're talking to him right now. Okay, my, my proof is this. I don't know that you have a well-established procedure, uh, for this so-called extension of the special exception. It sounds to me like it is exactly another special exception. It differs in no way from what we're doing tonight. Now, think about this. If we had a building started within two years, which is a real possibility, but if we started our building within two years, any changes in zoning at that point would be moot, would have no effect on what we're doing, because our use would be grand crap. Yes, vested, okay, vested is the word. We're asking you to give us that same regular protection that would exist if we built the building in two years. For five years. Because this is not a typical development. This is a, a charity-funded organization that seeks to do something that is very specifically called for in the master plan and accommodated in the ordinance. We seek your help in implementing this in a realistic fashion. Your convention of doing this for two years and never more is not what the law intends. The law very clearly gives you authority to extend beyond the two-year period, and I think you ought to pay attention to that.
Let's go to a poll of honor. I, I let him, I let the applicant speak again, because I tried to cut him off before him because of how chaotic this, this, uh, meeting is here, looked annoying. Members of the board?
I mean, after Travis's explanation and after what the gentleman just said, I'd like, I'd like to have a, a legal opinion on that.
Luke?
If that's the consensus of the board, I have no problem getting, uh, the town attorney involved. I'd recommend the board continue to a date specific. I would like to see that, Travis.
I would, too.
Well, you're just a motion away from it happening.
Yeah. I want to see that motion.
Luke, I couldn't hear a word that you said.
Travis checks with the town attorney to see if the five-year is unrealistic or illegal against what we currently have written as law. For statute.
We've already taken a vote.
Ask for a legal opinion at, at, at time of initial approval or initial action, if the board can grant greater than two years under the statute.
What is Tim's question now?
Correct.
Correct.
He would have to get the vote reversed to go back to town attorney.
Yes, and I'd clarify that we use the word legal rather than unrealistic or realisted.
I agree with you.
Uh, Sarah has brought the fact that, uh, we've already voted on not moving past two years. And her opinion is, if we're going to bring the, uh, town attorney into this, we should reverse that vote and make that vote moot so that it can go forward with, to the town attorney, and then the vote can be properly done after we have the information.
Agreed. Suzanne, could you reverse that vote?
I'll let somebody else do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reverse the vote where we stated that only a two-year extension could be given and not a five-year.
Pending legal opinion, perhaps.
I'll go and second that for discussion. A roll call vote, Audrey Klein?
Yes.
I can't hear a word of what Tim is saying. He doesn't come across. I have no idea what he's saying.
Okay, hold on one second.
Sorry about that, I lost my phone connection.
Tim's making the motion down.
Can you make it continue?
Yes, Tim Cronin?
Make a, I'm making a motion to, I'm sorry, I lost my phone connection there, to reverse the ruling that we had stating only a two-year extension could be given, and it, give us time to check with the town attorney to see if there's any legal stance between a two-year and a five-year. Can the five-year be given? And then continue this the next month.
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion, that the town attorney be given the information that the applicant has already had a, uh, two to a three-year approval, so we'd be looking at seven to eight years that this would be in flux with an approval. I think the town attorney needs the total background on this proposal.
I agree with that.
Could I, could I try to clarify that a little bit? Maybe I don't understand, but my understanding was that their special exception that they got for two years has already expired. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it seems like we could move forward with the assumption that we're starting a new two-year application.
Correct.
And then those questions of extensions can be asked of the attorney, and we can meet at a date certain, which would be next month's meeting, whatever date that is.
Correct.
That's correct, Audrey. Audrey, that's correct. However, they have had an approval that has lapsed, so in essence, they will be having up to seven years to get this off the ground. And I think that background information, while legally you are correct, they are starting from square one, I do think the background of this application should be forwarded to the attorney so they can see that the timeframe has been ongoing.
I think that's fine. I don't think that's gonna make any difference, so there's no reason not to, not to send that information forward.
Yeah, I, I, just chiming in, I don't have any power to send that information with the town attorney. However, the question to me is more relevant to the statute itself as to whether the board can go beyond two years for good cause. So, the zoning, they ultimately want to figure whether good cause has been established, if you can do it. But the question is, is it legal to do it anyway? Does that make sense?
Yes.
On, on the motion to, to, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanna, hello?
Yeah.
Hi.
My question is to Tim. Two years, they have an avenue to attack and get it approved for two years, or perhaps three years. I don't understand what you're asking for, because this is all possible for them to get their five years by following the process which seems to be outlined in the statutes. So I'm just concerned about spending a lot of money talking to town attorney about something that has a very clear path already outlined in the regulations that we already have. Also, we haven't come back to us. We did grant them an extension. In that case, the state shut them down because they didn't have enough water, which interestingly enough was a concern about the abudders from the ghetto, but it's water over the dam or no water. Tim, I don't understand what your reasoning is. Can you explain that? Because I couldn't hear you earlier.
I think when Travis, uh, read the statute, it, at the end of that, it said that there is a potential of going further, and I'm trying to remember the exact term that he used. It seems like we have the ability to do that. The gentleman is making the application feel the same way. We're looking at it a different way. So by asking that question, I don't think it's gonna be a big expense, is to get a ruling on that, to find out, could we give him a four-year extension or a three-year extension? I don't know what the answer is after Travis read the, uh, read the statute. It seems, it doesn't seem clear to me.
I think Travis says that we are not giving extension at this time. We are given an approval at this time, and the statute says years for your approval.
As is to the town vote.
The extension comes when the approval is about to expire.
Okay, we have a, a discussion on the motion. So the motion we have in the file right now is, is to rescind the last vote and vote to town attorney and ask for a ruling on whether we can extend the approval beyond two years, if approved.
Actually, if we can issue it, not extend.
If we can issue it.
Uh, let's go back one second. Sarah brought up a good point. If the last one has expired, and this is a new, a new application, then it's not an extension. Correct? They're, they're asking...
Correct, this is a...
Which takes everything else, it'd be, if you're going along the fact that it's not an extension, and we're looking at, if you had anybody else come in and ask for a, a similar type application, would you automatically give it a two years? Is that what the statute is?
We can only give them two years. We can't, at that time, at that time, we can't give them one year. We have to give them the two years, after which time they have the ability through our voted ordinance to come in and ask for an extension, but just cause.
Of the town planner, if somebody comes in, would they automatically get a two-year, uh, two-year timeframe?
No.
No. What are you, I don't know why you're so confused by this.
I'm not confused, Suzanne. I'm asking a specific question. If, if, if somebody comes in with a similar type application, is the standard, if that is approved, to give a two-year timeframe?
That's the, that's the law. That's our town law and our state law. We can't give them a one year, we have to give them the two.
So why don't we just turn around?
Yes, and we can't give them more either. Correct.
That's my, that's the question that I was asking.
Okay, Tim, we have, we have this motion on the floor. Let's break this up a bit, but I'd like to do a roll call vote.
Go ahead.
Audrey Klein?
Yes.
Tim Cronin?
Yes.
Suzanne Ryan?
No.
Sarah Silk?
This is just a vote, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself is a yes.
Now, we're looking at this thing as this is a brand-new application. Two years. Correct?
Correct. So we have, we have a motion, we're gonna get in touch with the town attorney and continue this to the next meeting. That was just a motion, though.
Can we, can we do the, the date certain?
The date certain will be the next meeting, which is...
But Luke?
Yes, Tim?
If under normal procedure, this gentleman came in and did his application today, the most you'd give him is a two-year timeframe, I don't think we have to go to the town attorney. We just approve it for two years.
Well, finally, that's what I was getting at. Give him his approval and then find out what we do about the extension. Do we give it to him now, or do we give it to him at the end of two years?
Okay. Tim, make that move.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, no, wait, we haven't been through the criteria. I think we should just quickly go through that we agree or disagree with the, I don't know, five points or whatever they are, and then make a motion to... I'd ask Luke to lead the, uh, the discussion on the criteria for special exception. I still have a question about the paperwork.
Okay.
On the memorandum, um, top page, under the subject, it says a variance filing date is...
Is that just, is that supposed to be the special exception filing date? Or is there a variance associated with this project?
No, it's a special filing date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll go through that, the criteria more quickly here. Sites to the boundary?
Yeah.
We will, for the new application.
It is, but I'm just updating Luke, this is exactly the same information that the board previously approved. This is the same memorandum that was brought forward two years ago. So if, if the board wants to accept them as presented in the memorandum, you'd be effectively accepting what you already approved two years ago.
Correction, this is not the same board, we have a new, uh, three, two, two new board members and a new chairman. And I think that we should not break from protocol and stay in good habit of going through the criteria.
No, I agree, I agree 100%. What I'm saying is if you are going to differ from what the predecessors on the board did, you need to be very specific on your findings.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go through the, we'll go through these, uh, the criteria. Adequate usable space, I would say yes, that the applicant meets that. Also meets, obviously meets adequate access. Uh, there is, uh, there's no environmental constraints that I can see. Doesn't appear they're gonna have any excessive trip generation, noise of vibration, dusk glare, heat, smoke, fumes, gas borders, or incorporate hours of operation from what we know. Uh, there'll be no undue nuisance or serious hazard, dust trade of vehicle traffic, including location and access design, block street parking, availability of public services and facilities.
I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
What is the state of the, um, water supply with regard to what they might need with regard to sprinklers? And water main? Do we know?
I have not been told, uh, that anything is not in line currently. But again, I don't believe the building permit has been submitted either.
Well, let's put it this way, assuming they end up needing sprinklers, do they have, we're, we're dealing with the public services and whether there's adequate public services. Have they determined what's adequate and whether they even have a chance of getting that?
Well, if they don't have it through the municipal water supply, they'd have to provide it on-site and presumably within the building without having to modify their site plan.
Right, so you're saying a cistern? I mean, if, if they're either gonna have a public water supply or they're, or they're not, and when, when does that get determined? If we're, if we're looking at the special exception and it's based on the impact to the public services and facilities, when are we gonna have the answer to that question?
The way the application has been submitted, there's going to be no impact. But again, no building permit has been submitted.
So I would say that that's, that's, that's poorly presented then, because that information could be given. I mean, a modest sewage load, you know, and, and the sprinklers could be significant.
They could be significant.
I guess my concern is, we're, we're, you know, we're looking at potentially approving this for two years and then potentially approving it for another extended period of time that we don't know. When are we going to start getting some specifics as to what they're going to need to do to the infrastructure to create this project? It's been, it's been three years already.
Well, the project, the project wants to, there's no fire, there's no fire for sewer and water impacts. No property is allowed to, to draw water or provide sewer that would limit their, uh, water's capacity. But if it's determined at the time the building permit is submitted, keep in mind, they're not able to submit until they have the special exception.
But they did have a special exception for three years. Or at least two years.
I, I understand that, but I, I can't make them apply, and until they apply, people don't look at sprinkler systems and sprinkler loads.
With all due respect, that is part of the site plan.
Correct.
What is your, what is your, you know, your town facilities? What, are they going to be there? If they're not, how are you going to create them?
Need an order for the ZVO to address this, they need to request the applicant provide a fire engineering analysis of the proposed structure and the sewer load analysis.
I think they should do that before they come before us again.
That's a, that's a hardship.
That's a hardship. This is normally resolved. Yeah, this is not, sorry.
I can't hear you.
Hold on one second.
I, I can't hear what the applicant is saying.
Uh, I was listening to the applicant, the applicant, uh, would like to make another statement, and I can open the public hearing, and that's, uh, what I think I'm going to do. I'm gonna open the public hearing if the applicant make one more statement with regards to your point Audrey, in addressing.
I, I, I would not, I would not, um, I don't need that to happen. I mean, you can do that if you want, but that's not gonna impact what my point is.
Okay. Any other members on the, on the, on the, that issue, the availability of public services and facilities?
Question for the planner.
I think Audrey, I, I think Audrey
Issue a building permit if those services were not readily available?
No, you're not able to, you're not able to issue a building permit without those not just being addressed, that's correct.
Thank you.
I think Audrey has a valid point. I think also that in this period of time, what's the town has recognized, and it goes back to what we were talking about, the road improvements. I believe that what Audrey is getting at is that yes, they are going to have to hook into town water and sewer. And that yes, the taxpayers will end up paying for it. And, uh, I think it's a valid, a valid question or concern given that it's lovely, and I mean, it's beautiful, that the proposal, the proposed building is, it's gonna be a tax exempt endeavor. So I think Audrey's question is most justified as to what's needed and who's paying for it.
I guess I'd like to rephrase that, I, you know, I, I think probably that the services along Bay Street need to be improved regardless. But my concern is that the plan needs to be developed very soon with regard to the specifics about what they need. Because if we're going to continue to approve the special exception, then we need to be getting additional information as, as time goes by. If we're looking at, you know, approving it now based on what we see here, I would expect in two years, if they come back for an extension, they'll have more information, that's, that's more detailed than we, than we have here. What's the point of extending it?
I, I think that the nature of this meeting, the way, the way you've had it and had to deal with this, I think the applicant, I don't wanna speak for the applicant, but the applicant is aware of that, and they're aware that as time goes on, they're gonna have more information when it's needed, and they're, and like, and the applicant is, is, you know, very But for right now, I think it's, right now, we're gonna focus on getting this approved for the two years, you know, if the, if that's the board's will. And getting, getting with the, the town attorney, and then we'll see where we're at. And obviously, as this comes down the road, the applicant's gonna have more information before they go and submit for a building permit or anything else.
Or an extension. So to, to that end, the site plan that we have here that we're looking at, is this the site plan that was approved three years ago?
That's correct.
Or has this been updated with, with information in the interim?
This, this is what the planning board approved with the, the conditions from the planning board. So there are some minor changes with regard to marking, traffic, open space, fencing, landscaping, et cetera. But everything that you're looking at is as approved by the planning board, including their conditions.
So I would just encourage the applicant, because it doesn't appear as if very much technical work has been done in the last three years, that that happened in the next two years before they come back in and ask for an extension.
Nicely said.
I mean, if the town is never going to put in a main that's big enough to service their needs, we don't wanna be kicking this can down the road for 10 years.
We're gonna continue, uh, to appropriate the site plan. And then immediate neighborhood integrity, historical use, established use. Impact property values, don't see anything there. And the proposed use structure is consistent with the Spirit of Part One and the intent of the master plan.
I think it is.
At this point, I entertain a motion with the criteria outlined by Travis on the, uh, for, with the board.
I'll make a motion to approve it presented for the two years, along with the comments that have been put through by the Wolf Town Planner.
I'll second.
Okay, Audrey seconded. Is there any further discussion? Do a roll call vote, Audrey Klein?
Yes.
Tim Cronin?
Yes.
Suzanne Ryan? Suzanne Ryan, you still there?
You're muted Suzanne.
No.
Okay. Sarah Silk?
This is for the two years on the front?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay.
Are we gonna move on to the next, uh, item now?
Yes, Tim, uh,
I'll read it.
Okay.
The applicant is TaxMap 243-60, case number 18-V-20, the applicant. And I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, it's Sonia Jous. Uh, public hearing for a variance under Article 10, Section 175-70A, 1B of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to allow for variance from the front setbacks to a new single-family dwelling. The property is located at 9 Fairway Drive.
Okay, we have the applicant representative here.
Will do.
Will do. Good evening, members of the board, I am Brian Berlin, I'm a licensed land surveyor and the owner of a company called Land Tech. With an O C P. With me tonight is Tom Doobie, the
Tom Doobie, the contractor in this project. And the owners, the buyers, Smiths, who will be doing the building of the project. Similar to the last case, we're dealing with an expired permit. In this case, it's an expired ZVA variance. So we reappear before you for the exact same thing, except the house is a little different from the variance application of two years ago. I would like to start with the pictures, please, if you can find those in your packets. There's two pages of them, the first page has four photographs, the second page only two. Referring to the four photograph page, uh, in the bottom left, what I call picture one, shows this one from the road. And in the foreground, you'll see a fire hydrant, underground utility of vault, power and telephone, and the site also has city sewer. In other words, the site is ripe for development. Picture two discusses why we're here, and that's the upper left-hand corner. Um, this is taken about 35 Okay, yep, um, in the upper left-hand corner is about 35 feet from the lot line, looking towards the road, downstream, showing where that 30-foot setback line is and the 20-foot setback. In the top right photo, is the right-hand butter, Mr. and Mrs. McCabe. And as you can see, their home is set way back from the road, well beyond the 30-foot maximum setback. Lastly, in the bottom right-hand corner, is the left-hand butter, the Shapiro's. And you can see there too, they are way, way back from the 30-foot maximum setback. And the house in question is on, should be in the right edge of that bottom right photo, which is a proposed home at this time. On the other photo page, showing only two photos, the top left shows the approved driveway crossing. This is approved by the State of Legend Phil Board and by the planning board for a special use permit to put a driveway culvert across the wetland and a stream running right down the middle of that wetland. And the bottom left picture shows, from the building site, looking at that exact driveway location. So it's sensitive land, there's a stream running through it, and there's wetlands to both sides of that stream. The stream is not year-round, it is ephemeral.
I remember walking that two years ago and it was dry.
I for one have never seen it dry, but I don't walk it that often. So we're dealing with an unusual ordinance. This is a maximum setback ordinance of 30 feet in the village residential zone. It has a minimum setback of 20 feet, so zoning demands that the front of the home be somewhere between 20 and 30 feet from the home, but not further than 30. The first picture showed, or the second one actually demonstrates just how wet and how much water is flowing through that, that 10-foot window between minimum and maximum zone. A little history, in 2018, this project was approved for for the 14-foot wide driveway over the stream and through the wetlands. That was in 2018, and that has a permit life of four years. Excuse me, that's five years for getting filled. Uh, a year later, in March of 2019, the planning board granted a special use permit for that exact driveway culvert and wetlands crossing. And then in November 15, 2018, the previous zoning board approved this variance, allowing the building to be greater than 30 feet from the road. I believe as it did two years ago, getting this variance, all the same conditions exist, the variance will not be contrary to public interest because the variance will allow the landlord to enjoy their property's highest investment with minimal wetland impact, which is not contrary to public interest. Item two for a variance request is the spirit of the ordinance of the Item two for a variance request is the spirit of the ordinance observed because the lot is environmentally challenged with a bisecting stream and wetlands. A variance will allow a permitted land with a minimal environmental impact, minimizing environmental impacts within the spirit of the ordinance. Response three, substantial justice is done because demanding that a new home be placed no greater than 30 feet from the street would place that home within the wetlands and its buffers, which could be an injustice since a better location is available. The variance will allow the landlord to construct a residence at the most logical location with minimal environmental disturbance. In this case, that most logical location is a lot of upland in the northeast corner of the law. In this particular case, the maximum setback of 30 feet is not appropriate given lot conditions and causes a true hardship upon the landlords. Criteria four is the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because with the variance, the home will be built back farther from the road, similar to its two immediate neighbors and in harmony with all neighbors. A brand-new home in a residential development with restricted covenants will not diminish surrounding property values. And lastly, criteria five, B, in this case, owing to the special conditions set forth above, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict performance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it because the land between the minimum setback and the maximum setback mostly wetland or wetland buffer. The lot would be unbuildable without relief to this maximum setback, which again is a true hardship. So that, there is a plan, as you can see, in the last page of the packet. It's the same plan submitted two years ago, except the footprint of the home is different. It's the same driveway, same setback covenants, and residential use. And that is my presentation. Thank you.
I have a question on the proposed house and garage. Are they exactly the same footprint that you approved last time?
Hold on one second, Tim. For the record, I'd like to do a roll call of who actually went to the site visit. Audrey Klein, did you go to the site?
I did not, but I'm familiar with the lot.
Okay. Tim Cronin?
I did not this time, but I did on the last application, and oh, well.
Okay. Suzanne Ryan? Okay, I'm muted again, Suzanne.
I didn't, and I don't remember if I went to the last one.
Sarah Salk?
I didn't go over the weekend because of the stuff that you need a lot, because I know the people in the neighborhood.
And I went by today, so. In the public hearing, Tim, you have a question for the presenter?
Yep. The question I had is the proposed house and garage, is it the exact same footprint that it was for the last application?
No.
No.
And if you could see it, if you could see it, that's the footprint of the old application. This home is a little bit smaller. Meaning, this current proposal is a little bit smaller. Is that helpful?
Tim, any other questions?
I'm off, I think.
Okay.
I have something for Travis, I think, maybe?
Okay.
Um...
Thank you, Garson.
So the variance is to the setback, are all the other conditions in that zone met here, or are there other issues that might need a variance? And what I'm thinking is that, does the zone require that the garage not be on the street side of the house?
I'm not aware of the zone requiring that the garage be behind the front lane of the house. In the zone.
I believe it says it has to be to the side or the rear. I might...
It is to the side. It is to one side.
Not from the street. I'm just, I want to make sure that we encompass everything that needs to be addressed.
Well, actually, the proposed is compliant in the last time. The last time this variance was approved, the garage was closer to the street.
Well, the last time, Audrey didn't sit in on it, I don't believe. She's brought a new perspective. Well, I think, yeah, I also, I was reading through the village residential zoning because it's changed since I read it last.
I'll keep looking. Okay. He's going to keep looking for that. Is there any other questions? Either four against, or how many questions?
Well, this is 175-70E.
175-70E, the garage should be located to the side or rear of the principal dwelling unit. The garage should be integrated into and masked by the residents or setback at least 15 feet behind the front building line and not the dominant architectural feature on the streetscape. So I would suggest that the building could be located where it's shown, but not that particular footprint. Without additional variance.
Could you repeat?
Well, clearly, given the location of the driveway, a different design would be virtually impossible.
Yes. I have a question, so.
And technically, the footprint does not depict it as a garage, it just shows the driveway leading to it.
I have garage on mine.
I do too.
I have it on mine.
Does he say on mine either?
Does he say garage on mine?
Do they have a copy of the old one?
Don't know which one. They should have that one.
You guys have this one?
I think I have the old one. No, I don't have that one.
Yeah, this is the one that was submitted.
Apparently, the old one went in the packet. That's not what I had in my packet.
May I go back to my question?
Yeah, Sarah has a question.
Okay, my question was for Travis, also relative to the positioning of the garage. And it appears as if if you measure back from the street, this is the first edge, that it's being construed, it's not being bothered, the closer to the street than the far left edge of the house.
Based on the submitted site plan, if you draw a parallel line from Fairway Drive, the house is closer than the garage. Before, but 24th garage, but it's not labeled as such on the plan.
Correct, but it appears that not every member of the board has the exact same drawing. The drawing should say 11 November 2020 in the bottom of the corner. I'm assuming the old drawing has a different date?
Yes, it has.
Yes, it's September 10, 2018.
Okay, so we have different drawings somehow.
Well, I'm going to say...
To the benefit of the board, the question is front setback. So the only question before the board this evening is with regard to exceeding the 30-foot front setback maximum. So this isn't an evaluation of the floor plan or the house arrangement, simply that the structure they're proposing is greater than 30 feet from Fairway Drive.
What did the public see for a plan, and the abadas?
Well, the whole package I'm looking through here is the current package. And that's what I put in all of the packets that were available, and I believe is posted online. But again, the floor plan is not being evaluated by the zoning board this evening. It's exceeding the 30-foot max to a structure in the bottom right-hand corner of the property. It's also noted to say any guarantee that the applicant will propose the footprint is on this plan. They're showing a representative floor plan for a structure that is approximate in size to those in the neighborhood in excess of 30 feet from Fairway Drive.
I do see the correct drawing in the electronic email we got, it's just the printed package had the other one.
Okay. So the public sees the appropriate information.
And at least two board members have the appropriate information. The submit of the board is not evaluating footprint or house designs with this, you're looking to allow a structure in excess of 30 feet from Fairway Drive. That's the information provided by the applicant.
Audrey, you have a lead?
I hear what you're saying, that was what was applied for. If that's what we're going to listen, you know, what we're going to hear tonight, when would this section that I brought up be addressed?
If the house plan were turned in and it was determined another variance would be needed, you would hear from the applicant at that time, should they choose to apply.
Gotcha.
Again, remember, any other questions from members of the board?
Nope.
Board members?
Could I ask, could I ask a question?
Sorry, Suzanne.
Luke?
Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Could I ask, Travis, uh, to, like, applicant, would it help expedite, be beneficial or not, them agree to repost this hearing with the proper garage on it and get the variance then and there altogether, at like, you know, the next go-around, at the next meeting?
That would have to be...
Get it out of the way?
Well, there's no giving...
Yeah, I know, I understand that. I understand that. It won't be breaking ground now. Renote it and get the two variances all in one, rather than piecemeal.
Is our case is strong for the variance of the garage, rather than location? It's a totally different animal.
Is that a motion, Suzanne?
I would like, yeah, I think it would be to their benefit, but I would make a motion that the applicant resubmit, that he withdraw this without prejudice, resubmit with the garage needing the variance, as well as the house.
Let's give names for a second.
I actually think, from an administrative standpoint, that Travis is correct in that we would, instead of requiring applicant to do that, it would either be their choice or they would resubmit if there was another denial requiring a variance. I'm not saying it doesn't make sense, but I just don't think the board can make a motion to require that.
Well, I put, I tried to put that out there as a, as a test to see what the applicant would say. I think it's more beneficial, but if they don't, I'd like to hear from them.
If I could consult with my team, if possible.
The applicants could consult for a second, we'll be right back.
Travis?
Tim, just hold on one second there, we're consulting the applicants right now on this question, so we'll be right back.
I just want, you know, whatever the zoning administrator feels about this, there'll be a notation in the file, so at least the question will be answered, you know, going forward, whether it comes back or not. We hope...
That was a good, Audrey, that was a good catch. Very nice.
Yeah, Audrey, Sarah couldn't hear you, what did you say? She'd like to hear what you just said.
She's on mute, Audrey. Audrey?
What?
Can you repeat what you said? I couldn't hear you.
I said that, um, I think that it's important that the question get answered by the zoning administrator or have a note in the file as to that it's been addressed, whether they come back, whether it's necessary for them to come back or not. I just didn't want that, this section to be hanging out there and not addressed. So I can't, personally, I can't tell by the drawing whether it needs a variance for that or not. You know, the zoning administrator or the building official would have to do a denial and, you know, bring that forward.
Yeah.
Now that I have the right drawing, that is.
Which I don't.
Did you get the electronic package, Suzanne? If you open that, it's in there.
I can't, I can't go from this format on my iPad to that without losing you. I don't know how to. I'm truly just trying to make it easier for the applicant, if that's their desire. If not, I have no problem proceeding.
And when you look at the email presentation of where the garage is, and you look going straight out to the road, parallel out to the sideline, it could be in equal distance.
When the applicants come back and they would like action on the current 30-foot request, so... We do a motion on the floor. Suzanne, what was your motion? Was it a motion, there was no second on it, so we're starting the discussion phase.
I'm fine with the discussion. If it would facilitate the application going forward to do the two variances at once, if it should be needed, then I would think that this would be the opportune time to do it. If it's felt that that's not needed, I mean, to come, you know, to come back, if it's felt it's not needed, and he'd come back another time, I just think it would be expeditious to do it, like, denying this without prejudice and then have him come back with the two variance requests.
The applicant would like to move forward with the current request for the 30-foot as submitted.
What was that, Luke? I didn't catch it.
The applicant would like to move forward with the application as submitted.
Fine. Fine. So, there's been no second to her motion?
Correct. That motion dies. Board members?
We have to go through the criteria.
Number one, variance will not be contrasted to public interest because it seems to be fitting with the rest of the house's neighborhood.
Well, we usually combine one and two because they're similar.
Yeah, it deserves a score. The score of the majority is, is, I believe. Three substantial justice is done because I don't let somebody else do that.
Where, where are you? I had to, I had to plug my computer and its battery's going dead.
Number three, substantial justice is done because?
Because the, uh, applicant is, uh, the benefit to the applicant does not outweigh the benefit or harm to the public.
Does outweigh.
Number four, values concerning properties will not be diminished.
I, I would attest that and say I don't believe it will be because other buildings are beyond the 30-foot, so I don't see that that would have a negative impact.
We have no expert, no, wait, we have no expert testimony, one way or the other, so typically, uh, we don't delve deep into that one.
Number five, literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would result in unnecessary because?
Yeah, I noticed, uh, on his application, um, I had to go in the other room to get my paperwork. Um, he addresses under number five A, he addresses the, um, substantial relationship to the public, uh, as far as, um, uh, fair and substantial, or reasonable, reasonable. But he doesn't talk about the, uh, fairness and the substantial, uh, benefit. Uh, he doesn't address A and B under number five. He, I can't find the darn paper.
Oh, I think he only needs to address A for unnecessary hardship and without, you know, this, this lot does have a hardship because without granting this variance, there is no buildable area.
Well, it, the, the, it typically, it's A and B, A and B, or alternatively, unnecessary hardship. I have to say, I don't have a big issue with this application being granted, but I don't see that both A and B have been addressed under five.
So, Suzanne, if you read B, it says if the criteria in sub-paragraph A are not established, and then you go on, but oftentimes, they're not, but in this case, um, it does create a hardship, A all by itself, because there is no buildable area, that house can be placed without variance.
He used A or B, so, go ahead. Sarah?
I think if we look at, they said have the November 11th, 2020, do you see that the permits received with any DES dredge and fill and special use payment? And then you look at the actual drawing itself, and you see all the wetlands area, the, uh, special conditions of a lot of areas.
Going through all those, is, is, uh, is there a motion on the table? If I'd like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, case 18V20, variance under Article 17570A, one and two, tax map 243060, nine Fairway Drive. Uh, the variance was filed for on 10/10/2000. Ah, Jesus, this is 18. That's the wrong date. Uh, I'll have to have someone fill the correct date in. For for the setback of the variance, I gotta find the memo. Eh, fooling. Per the memo with the conditions as outlined by the planner.
Should there be Audrey's comment there, too, about the, the distance from the road or the, the garage location? Should there something be put in there just to cover what she said? Because that was pretty important.
Audrey, you want to amend my motion?
Tim, I don't think they'll be able to get a building permit if it doesn't meet that garage.
It's fine. If they check all the stuff, then that's covered.
Can motions be made seconded? Any further discussion? See if not, Audrey, well, Audrey Klein?
Yes.
Tim Cronin?
Yes.
Suzanne Ryan?
Yes.
Sarah Stone?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will.
From November 9th, 2020.
Can I make a comment, Luke? Um, I just wanted to thank the secretary. Uh, we, we asked that she include, um, who were members, who are alternates and, um, you know, the various officers and whatnot. And, uh, I thought she did an excellent job with that, and I wanted to thank her.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any corrections on page 31? Page two? Page three?
I'm going to go to the minutes from November 9th, 2020 as written.
Second. I'll do a roll call vote. Audrey Klein?
Yes.
Tim Cronin?
Yes.
Abstain. I wasn't present.
Okay. Myself?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, 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 wait.
Go ahead. Discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, I, 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 I know the business could just read quickly. Uh, this number, this number five for variance addresses to Travis, Tavis. Um, it's been my understanding, and I could be totally misunderstanding this, so since you're going to be talking to the town attorney anyway, um, for which I hope we can see the written question and the written answer. It's usually given to us in an envelope. So, number five on the, uh, literal enforcement of unnecessary hardship, there's A and B. And if A and B aren't met, alternatively, they have to provide the unnecessary hardship reasoning or criteria. I've always understood and interpreted it as it shall be A and B, not A or B. So, can we find out if it's A and B?
Absolutely.
You follow?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to ask, but I believe this application form is the way the statute is with A or B.
Yeah. So, go, yeah, so going forward, um, it, I don't make an issue or we all understand whether, how, how to read that.
Correct. I have a hope of that.
Thank you. That's it.
Any other, uh, any other comments or questions? Or other business?
I, I don't know whether this is, um, something for the board or not, or whether it's just administrative, but is there any possibility that, um, with fewer people attending in person, that there's another room in town hall that can be used for the three or four board members that are here? Is there IT in any of the smaller conference rooms?
Well, I.
Can there be?
IT isn't the issue. It's the television camera and YouTube connection that's only in great hall.
Oh. Maybe we should consider approaching, uh, the powers that be about having a second location because, um, unless there's a lot of people, the, the great hall is difficult as it is, never mind with trying to add IT to it from a, from a, um, conversation standpoint.
And then, I mean, they're all likely, they could be going back to a complete remote. Who knows? Fairly soon here.
Audrey, I don't think we can need the COVID restrictions in a smaller room.
Well, um, it depends on the size of the room. I mean, I don't know what, what the conference, what, what other conference rooms are available, but certainly in what would have been the old library, there's room for three people, maybe four, and still distance with masks. I think. I mean, I just think there should be some exploration of other places, um, to do meetings such as this.
I, I told you on the planet, I was here Thursday night for an ag commission meeting because we had more than 10 people, and it was dreadful. You couldn't hear. It's too much, we weren't on TV, but it's the social distancing, you couldn't hear people. And echoing in this room is atrocious.
It is horrible. And, and the state, and the state right to know law said the public has to be able to just discern what's being said. And we, the members, at least I speak for myself, and it's not because I'm hard of hearing, I couldn't understand a lot of the muffled words that were being said. So, uh, Luke, I have to commend you for handling a total chaotic meeting. Um, very stressful, I'm sure.
Well, I mean, it is what it is. It's happened twice now, and it, it seems like, it seems like we almost had a better thing going when we were doing completely remote. So, uh, we gotta, we gotta look at that between now and the next meeting because if that, I mean, if that's, if that's a better way for us to do things, and we can all actually hear each other and, you know, have a meaningful meeting where we're not all running around in here, uh, that might be the way to go, so.
Well, as chairman, I would hope that you would, uh, inquire with whomever to see if that can't be accomplished.
I will.
Wonderful. Thank you.
We have that motion. Sarah Stone, it's admitted. It all in favor. I'll do a roll call vote. Audrey Klein?
Yes.
Tim Cronin?
Yes.
Suzanne Ryan?
Absolutely.
Sarah Stone?
Yes.
Myself is yes. Okay. Good night, everybody, and thank you.
Night.